Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Even there getting few and four between to be here. Okay. Everybody got a copy of the minutes of the previous meetings for 10:19, 10:23, and 11:02?
Yep.
I'll make a motion we approve of in the sense provided.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the claim and warrants will be processed and through on Wednesday, November 22nd. 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Due to Tasha being quarantined with COVID. At Kathy's advanced age, we didn't want to expose her to anything.
It would have been tragic.
Yes. Okay. Payroll warrants for 10:26, 11:02, 11:09, and 11:16, in the amount of $32,683.69.
I'm make a motion to accept the claims and warrants.
A second.
And the payroll. Did we already do the claims and warrants? Sorry.
No.
Oh, you guys did it.
I was quarantined with COVID, so those will be...
The payroll, then. I apologize. Sorry.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Oh, we got bank reconciliations for the end of the month, October 2023. For the town, $1,567,188.51. Payroll, $2,636.13. And customer deposits, $35,990.
I'm moved to accept the bank reconciliations for the end of month, November, October, rather.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got one billing adjustment in the amount of $518.90.
I'll make a motion to approve the billing adjustment for $518.90 if all the paperwork's done.
Yeah, it's when you approved at the last meeting. It was underground late.
Yep.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dustin? I think you're here about a pay application. Is that true?
I have a couple. So you should have, I think, did you give copies of the pay application for the CCG stuff?
We already approved that pending clarification.
Okay.
For the 672. And then today Kevin sent the one for the balance.
Yep, the 35, 420, 24.
Yes. So that one does need approved.
Yep, and that's... I only brought one copy because I hate throwing but...
I didn't stick that one in there.
So, thought I had more, so you guys may have to share, but it's just the retainers amount. It's the, it's super small to... It's the 35, I can't read upside, 420, 24. It's just for the retainers amount, and as you can see, if you look down at the far right-hand column, is all adjustments for the quantities that were supposed to be installed that actually came in under what they said, what they bid, so instead of being seven or eight hundred and some thousand dollars, total project came in at like 704. And had some changes.
Okay, that was my question. I never got an email back on the clarification. So, the difference in that, we have to send back to Endo, correct? So how did that work out with? It came in short, but there was a couple projects they did that weren't in the project. Will we be built separately for that? It's that 4,000 and some there at the very bottom.
Yeah, so they took them off there. So did they do the... That's why I couldn't find out if they actually did the work or not.
See, that's what I wanted clarification, but I didn't get it back.
They would, I mean, since it's outside of that, they could be built separately, since it doesn't, since Endo doesn't need to see it. They could, we can have them just, if you approve this, we can...
It's a negative, so I didn't know.
It's a negative, so you didn't pay anything on it on this.
Okay.
We can have, if they did do it, we can have them pay, have them invoice to the town separately.
For that, okay.
Not on that paperwork.
I'm gonna have to take the whole top of the... Because that's the final dollar amount due, right?
Yep.
So 25 percent of that and send the balance back, right?
I gotta get confused by community crossings every time.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're not so...
35, 420.
But I did talk to a very helpful person at HWC just today, Katie?
Katie Adams.
Yeah. She was like all over the stuff, so...
Yeah, so I'll email her tomorrow, make sure I'm as clear as I can.
She knows a way more I know, just... Yeah, she was like, oh, I used to work on the Endo side of this, and I was like, oh, so you're the problem.
Yeah, she's the one that gets the process going, and then Kevin stepped in at the end, but I'll just email her then.
Yep, she'll be able to clarify anything.
You wanna look that, Scott?
I can. I looked at, I mean, well, I guess I... Different than the one I was looking for. Whoops, I mean, I didn't add them all up, but that's right.
I did on the first one, and it means since the...
It's just the, you know, this is the retainers.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was more pay-ups to count, that was gonna push it up more than that on that part.
It's like they've got everything, you know, all the subparts are done.
It's too bad they just wouldn't let us keep it for next year. It's like 35, one.
420, 424. 35, 420, 24.
Yeah, I'll just email her in the morning or come in.
We need to prove that. Motion to approve the expenditure for closeout to community crossings.
I'll make a motion to approve the community crossing.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
We need to keep that.
That's all I have on that, but I have some wastewater stuff, if you wanna talk wastewater.
Let's go.
We're excited. We're so excited.
So after the last meeting, I got ahold of SRF. They, Commune Miners at SRF, and she understands the situation that you're in. Obviously, she can't, and SRF can't obligate any kind of money or anything like that, until the application's in April and then follow-up in July. Tried to contact John McGee, haven't heard back. Called me in this afternoon, haven't heard back from him yet. With her experience, with SRF's experience with things somewhat similar in the past, RD, Will, and they, they know where you're at. They're, they're a loan agency. They're, it's not like they're completely demolishing everything down there to do additional work, so they do provide additional loans. I'll still try to contact John McGee, and then I'll, if I get ahold, he'll probably call tomorrow since the meeting was today. But I'll send out an email, just a quick summary of everything. But Camille's, at SRF's recommendation was to go in and get a, ask the PER started. No matter which direction you go, whether you rehab or you do a mechanical plant, if you go after funding through either agency, you have to have a PER to submit with that. So their, her recommendation was to go ahead and get started on that. The SRF's one that's due in April. If you submit it after April 1st, they don't evaluate it for that year. You have to wait a whole nother year. Still a decent amount of time till then, but you lose November, you lose December, and then all of a sudden it's February, and we're, it happens every year for every project that we do is, you get around the holidays, you figure what the timing is. But, so, agent, funding agency-wise, seem like they both can, could be on board with whatever we, as the town of Bonnassumo want to do. I also ran a few more numbers, because we were looking at the rehabilitation and the mechanical plant as... We looked at capital costs, obviously rehab's a lot cheaper than we looked at the long-term cost. Tried to fine tune those a little bit since the last meeting. The numbers, the differences really didn't change. If we make some assumptions, if the, if the life expectancy, not life expectancy, that's not the word I wanna use, if the comparison time period is 20 years, and we assume the sand media for the circulating sand filters lasts 10 years, then rehab's about a million dollars cheaper over that 20-year period. But as you start to adjust, if the media doesn't last that long, say it only lasts seven years, the rehab's about $900,000 cheaper, so it only saves you a little bit. But I saw, I said, at some point, it has to be cheaper to do the mechanical plant, because that spending $1.2 million for rehab every seven to 10 years has got to catch up eventually. So I looked at, you know, what if you compare them over 30 years? If you compare them at 30 years, and the sand lasts 10, it's about, instead of being a million dollars difference, it's only $400,000 difference. And then if you say the sand only lasts eight years, seven to eight years, it's, then the mechanical plant's about $500,000 cheaper. So it actually flips, and the mechanical plant becomes cheaper for the 30-year period versus the circulating sand filter. And then 40 years, the same thing again, just begins to grow between the mechanical plant and rehab. But we don't evaluate, for the PER, we don't evaluate on 30 or 40 years, we just do the 20 years to be in compliance with those both permitting into our both funding agencies. So it really comes, I mean, yes, there's a cost difference, and it costs more, but you guys have been experiencing headaches for three, four, five years, whatever the number is now, can't remember off the top of my head. You can choose an option that is not the cheapest, if you have good justification for that being so. An obvious justification is if you've lost, what, one and a half, two operators, one operator, can't remember since then, due to retirement, just tired of the headache. So you guys can make a decision other, any other way you want. The big, and I guess the more important decision at this point is, if you do rehabilitate, if you decide to go rehabilitation, we can proceed with doing the sledge processing, so the geo bag system, the sledge holding tanks, and all that stuff that we've got in the water project. We can proceed with the design of that and bid it out in the first of the year and get that under construction. However, if you, if your long-term goal as part of the PER is to do a mechanical plant, at doing the sledge processing, let's say now, that work doesn't make a lot of sense, because you'll have a sledge holding tank that you've gotta pay for now, and then once the new mechanical plant is online, that you won't need it. We'll repurpose some of the tankage out there, that phosphorus tank that you guys paid for five or six years ago, repurpose that into a sledge holding tank. Some of this piping will get scrapped, just to do realignments and repiping and things like that. So the, some work that you do now on the sledge work, if you do a mechanical plant, will get demolished in two years, three years, whatever, however long it takes to do the mechanical plant. So there's, there's trade-offs to whichever route you guys decide to go. So I have my, I guess my off-the-cuff recommendation would be, if you're gonna do rehab, let's move forward with the sledge process that we're, that we had already talked about. But if you're leaning towards the mechanical plant, let's hit the brakes on the sledge processing. I know it's gonna be a pain for the guys down at the plant, but I hate to put in, you guys spend money now to have to remove, you know, $50,000, $100,000 worth of brand-new installation as part of the mechanical plant. This doesn't make a lot of financial sense for, for you guys. So, I know I kinda threw a bunch of numbers out there, so I do apologize, but if anybody have any questions with...
Well, if you do the rehab, then we still have a sledge problem for many years, so...
Well, we'd have to do that, this geo bagging system. But we could, if you go do it the rehab, we would start design, which we've already started a little bit of it, start designing that sledge process now.
Now, okay.
And then go into construction in the spring. But if you're, if you're thinking you don't wanna deal with the circulating sand filters anymore, and you wanna do mechanical plant, then we would stop the design of any sledge process, because you're gonna have to rework some of that as part of the future design.
What is, uh, item, probably not number one on this, favorite people now anyway. So if we say, okay, we're just gonna live with what we got another two years and do this, do you have any ideas or any feeling for what their thoughts are?
So they, we, John, we drafted that letter, and John sent it to IDEM saying, please give us till January 15th, or whatever, I can't remember what day we picked, but give us till the end of January to make our decision so we can get a game plan. So you guys have till then to, to kind of formulate a game plan that you wanna do. And then by that January 15th or 30th, whatever date that was, you guys will have to, it's kinda like we did on the water, you have to put together kind of a compliance plan. And they can be fairly lengthy, I mean, the waters was two, two and a half years, uh, compliance. IDEM will not like it, but they won't hate it, I guess is, they, you'll still get dinged if you have an overflow between now and when it goes into compliance, you'll still get in trouble. You guys will end up on the agreed order at some point anyway, no matter what. But they'll understand that the reason that you guys are having issues is that you're in the process of, of going at your study, you're gonna do the study phase, and then on this, on wastewater, they'd like to see you go straight from study to design and have design ready so that whenever you do get funding, you're ready to go. So kind of, on the water side, we, we did it a little different. We got, tried to get funding, and then we started design. They don't wanna see that. You guys go ahead and start design, so that as soon as you have funding, you guys are ready to go, and there's, there's no waiting on us or whoever the engineer is to do the design and get it bid. They wanna see you be able to bid immediately when you have funding. So they, they could, you still could get in trouble. Really, not a lot more trouble you can get in after a reorder, other than big fines, but as long as you have a, a plan of action, and you are following that, you can't say in two years, we're gonna be in compliance, and then a year from now, be sitting having the same meeting. They're, they're gonna be really mad at that point. But if you say, we'll be ready in three years, and for the next six months, we're gonna do a study, and then for the next year and a half after that, we're gonna do design, and then we're gonna be ready as soon as we can get funding from a rural development SRF, we're ready to go, then they would under, that they can understand. That's, that's something feasible and viable that they'll understand. I don't know if I've really answered your question or not, but I kinda beat around the bush, but...
Yeah, I'm just trying to outguess them anyway.
Well, hadn't we, like, kind of discussed that the rehab would probably just put us in more trouble for longer than just going ahead with the mechanical?
Yes.
I mean, I, I know it wasn't official official, but haven't we all kind of discussed?
I guess that's, I, I wanna know whether you guys want us to stop on the design of the sledge process, because you're gonna go mechanical, or if you wanna keep us going on the sledge process, and then we bid that, you know, early chamber, if ever. That's the real kind of decision that needs to be made by you guys, I guess.
And what, and what was the dollars for the sledge removal?
Oh, it was... Without doing my calculator here, I would say it was in the neighborhood of about $250,000, $250,000 or so. So I mean, it's not a lot, a lot of money, but it's, it's a lot of money to, to, to put out there and then have to scrap, you know, $25,000 tank, and then $25,000 for the piping. You hate to scrap 20% of a project, you know, a year and a half from now, but it does help boost some of those guys down there when the, once the sledge gets in process, so... Kind of a sticky situation, I guess.
Yeah.
And there's still a chance we have to change the beds out again in three gallons, demolition time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, 1.2, if you did all the force, about 1.2, give or take a hundred thousand.
So really, there's no clear cut.
I think it started right, we'd already discussed, I thought we'd pretty much gone to the, to get rid of the sand filters and go with the mechanical plant. So, at that point, do we wanna spend an extra 100, $50,000 for a couple years? That's what it amounted to, basically.
Did we ever read out on what it was, what it would take to do the rehabilitation of the beds using the hydrogen peroxide?
We did get any feedback from Aranco. They've been less than super helpful on that. They didn't, they won't give a quantity, that's the biggest thing. I mean, it's, you can, you can put it in those, the lot, you can dump it in the lines or pump it into those lines and get pretty good dispersal, but they won't give a quantity of how much it would... You know, if it's 100 gallons, if it's 5,000 gallons. We could, I'll try to press them again a little bit more to see if they could give us a ballpark. I'm not saying it's gotta be down to the, if they can give us a ballpark of whether we're talking 100 gallons or 10,000 gallons. That way, we, we have a starting point, at least to, you can start a corner. I mean, you can just do a little, little section, you know, by a fraction of what the total amount would be to see if it does anything, because if it doesn't do anything, then there's no sense in, in doing it everywhere. But I, I'll continue to press them as much as I can, but they've, they've already made it pretty apparent that they're out of the circulating sand filter business, and...
And we should have been.
I, I, I guess, I...
Yeah.
I don't know the, the thought process on that, but they're kind of leaving some of their, their clients, I guess. Let's say for lack of a better word, high and dry, or for you guys, wet.
Well, it seems kind of silly to dump more money into this, those, that other process if eventually it's gonna be trashed anyway, waste of money.
Well, I mean, I guess the question is, is does it, if you spend that $250, save us from spending a million to change the filters out if they totally fail? Because that's, with that?
Yeah, I mean, there's always the, the chance that you get complete failure down there, and then you have, before you, before you can even get to the mechanical plant, you have complete failure of one of the beds, and then you gotta replace the media before you...
I don't know enough of the, the science and engineering to know.
Sounds to me there's no good option.
Because that would be the...
That would be the worst of both worlds there.
Yeah.
So...
And there's no guarantee, though.
What do you recommend? What's your recommendation to us?
I mean, I, personally, I'm not, I don't pay user rates, so I'll take this for, I think the mechanical plant is the, the long-term better option, and that's why I looked at the 30 and 40 years to see, you know, that's not your guys' generation to have to deal with, but future generations, what are, you don't wanna put them in a bad position. So I think the mechanical plant is the best solution long-term for you guys, even though it does cost more. But the sledge, I, I spent some time to try to figure, we can, we can lay everything out to minimize how much is, gets removed, but I still think there's amount of piping and amount of, um, that tank, the tank ends up getting wasted, because you're gonna put a 3,000 to 5,000 gallon tank in, and there's, there's no way to save that. There's, there's nothing we can do in the short term to save that. It's a... Financially speaking, I mean, if you just got money, it makes sense to not do the sledge, but I don't wanna also put your operator in a, in a really bad spot.
I pretty well think the item inspector was saying we need to go to the tank system and not to... Did you gather that?
I mean, one option, I, rather than put in the sledge processing, you just start scheduling a little bit of sledge removal from the primaries, you know, if you know it was gonna cost $250, you're gonna spend some money, let's, let's schedule every month to have a honey dipper come in and pull 20,000 gallons or $20,000 worth of material out of those primaries, gets the sledge out of the system, gets some of that snotty phosphorus material out. Doesn't do as good as the bagging system, but hopefully buys some time and buys some protection with the sand filters.
Seemed to me like he was leaning towards the, at least any interim with a quick fix, something to prevent us getting in a situation where we have complete failure, or things got, got worse to the point where... But so they come in and take, and take charge of it themselves, they're gonna fix it.
Yes.
And they're gonna fix it by spending the money to the first person available that'll do the job, and then they're gonna drive away and give us a bill. So, I, I agree that definitely the mechanical plant sounds like it's the best choice for the future. But we've got to do something right now to stop that anyway, to prevent, we just can't. We've got enough irons in the fire with the water treatment plant and all the other money that we're trying to get to have a major discharge, major failure down there is just gonna be really crippling.
So, really, our, for the long-term, the option is a mechanical plant. Short-term is either spend 10, $50,000 and put the sledge removal system in, or monthly spend $20,000.
Yeah, I'd just do 20,000. I'd, I...
Yeah, well, whatever it is, it would be gallons. I don't know how much, how much is...
Gallons or dollars?
I don't know how much, how much you guys charge per...
Yeah, I don't know what the charge is to do.
Right, to take it a whole...
Well, could we clean a bed that overflows and have it cleaned? That way, if we get a complete pluggage on the other two, the other, the rest of them, then we have someplace to go.
I do one bed.
Yeah, just work back.
It seems like when you're out there...
Yeah, and say it until...
It seems like that one corner where it does overflow has, is lower. There's an obvious reason that it has to be lower, that's why it's coming out in that location. I wonder...
See, I've heard from two different people, that corner, they run out of sand and use the clay product in there.
See, I've heard from two different people, that corner, they run out of sand and use the clay product in there.
We can, I mean, we can try to hang and dig or, I mean, cause it's not deep and it's just, I mean, it should be sand, so it should be easy, but it's clay, we are dig, but... Um, I mean, there's, for it to come over in just that location, cause if it was level all the way across, it would come out and you would overflow everywhere at the exact same time. Since it's coming out in that corner in a very, I mean, you can see exactly where it went over. And it's not ten feet long and ten feet the other direction. And I wonder if there's a way that we can, it's not, it wouldn't look pretty at all. If there was a way to, you know, you put, stick a board with, covered in some thick, you know, heavy mill plastic and you put, stack it along, you know, take, cover a whole sheet of plywood or something and you shove it down that side. And so that it just creates a, a wall and you can put some sandbags or something on there just to give it some support. So, it doesn't wanna just tip over to see if, if they're not, when they're not there, if it starts to get high in that area, it's just enough to keep the water away from the edge and, I mean, thirty mil plastic. I mean, it wouldn't take those guys half a day a day to, to rig up something with some, some heavy mill plastic and just see if it works and some sandbags, sandbags are three dollars, I think, at Menard, four dollars at Menards. Couple hundred bucks just to see if it helps. I mean, that doesn't fix the, the treatment of it, but if, if we, cause you guys are gonna get in trouble for not treating it. You got in trouble for overflowing. So, if you can keep it in the beds and get it, even if you're not meeting limits, I mean, cause that's his part, the inspector's preference was don't meet limits before you overflow. It's better to partially treat than it is to not treat. Uh, it was this kind of their stance. So, if we can do something just to keep the water in the facility itself, then you might be, buy a little grace from IDIM. They did something, they'll take a picture, they'll say it looks good, if the, if that's the job, doesn't matter what it looks like. It'll be an obvious Band-Aid, but sometimes that's what it takes. So, I guess my, my recommendation is probably go with the mechanical plant. Uh, stop design of the sludge process. Build up a little makeshift dike for a lot, lack of a better word. And just start some, some monthly or every two weeks, depending on when your sludge hauler. And I can help find, figure out a, a gallonage of, that, that probably needs to come out along with Bruce and, and get that out of there and spend, rather than spend that money, this money, at some point, you gotta get the sludge out of there anyway. So, if you can do it every two, three, four weeks over the next however long it takes, the sludge is coming out and you're not accumulating on it, I guess that would be my, my recommendation.
Do you have all that written down, Kathy?
Pardon me?
Do you have all that written down?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
Well, to keep from having this discussion again, let's make a motion and approve it and...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to um, do the mechanical plant. If you guys are all in agreeance, do the mechanical plant and stop the sludge bagging that we were gonna do. And make a makeshift dam dike.
And haul off some sludge.
And haul off some sludge.
I'll say that.
Long fair?
I, I...
That way we, I'm the beginner, it's within the management.
Is it bad?
No, I...
I say bad, I have more bad news.
I want some answers to some questions I have about the past.
Yep.
And why some decisions were made, that were made for this town.
Yep, totally.
Thank you.
That, so, we'll proceed with that. Um, and then the, the next thing, it doesn't have to be in, in November, December, but um, we'll have to look at doing a preliminary engineering report for the wastewater facility. And we'll be able to, if you want us to do it, we can pigtail off of what we've already done for the water. So, we've discussed some of that wastewater stuff in it, but we'll have to pull it out and it'll have to be separated, uh, PUR and everything. And that would be word, it can be written for rural development and ASRF so that there's no revisions that, of that nature in the future. But it can be submitted to both agencies for funding.
So, this is something that like a, a sunderman or one of those kind of places would come in and haul? Is that what you're talking about or no, no?
I don't know, Wheeling, I think you guys have used Wheeling before.
Snow light and Wheeling. What they've used in the past.
There's Merrill Brothers, there's Wheeling, there's... Oh, what's the other one?
Lots of big ones.
RL Environmental.
They have to have a place where they can handle that.
Yep.
So, we could get started on that, like now. I mean, like whoever could...
And first we'd have an idea of who you guys have used in the past and who's, who's got the best price. I mean, that's what, they all do the same thing, so it's just who can do per gallon cheaper than the other at that point.
Okay.
And we can help if, if, if you need our help, we can certainly help contact those companies as well.
Wheeling's just doing a bunch of sludge for Aranco. Uh, before your last meeting, cause I drove by all their trucks. They dumped it right over across the plant there. They wrapped it all, I mean, they do a lot of it, so.
And they'll land apply, they apply to act, permanent agriculture fields, what they do with the sludge.
Okay.
And then they gotta lay up and all kinds of...
Yep.
So, I don't feel like, you know, I'm, I'm assuming those fields are specifically for Aranco, but have a lot.
They, they, uh, use, depending on how it's contracted, they may not be for Aranco, cause Wheeling and Merrill and they have their own land application permits for fields. Some communities have their own, so they can hire anybody they want to go, just haul it to Jim Bob's farm down here and they can apply every year to his farm. But most of, uh, like Wheeling and, and those places have their own permits, so they, they've got five hundred fields throughout the state or whatever that they know they can apply now the waste to.
Well, cause they're tran- I just, it's nice, cause their transportation costs are so low there. They've got that, I mean, they, yeah, they gotta get their trucks down here, but once they get them here, then they're, they're going a half mile and back and half mile and back, there's not a lot of transpo in the...
Uh-huh, and the volume is a lot of, big volume. Hang on, I guess, or... He can get out of here if he wants to, so.
On the water side, I'm just gonna say we're chugging along with design. We've working on, there's not a lot that, I, we're just doing in the, the meat of the design right now as far as calculations and things go, so. No, uh, nothing bad, nothing good to report, I guess.
Have you received from IDIM what their preference is on the...
We have not heard on the industrial discharge permit that would allow us to discharge the river yet. My guess, it'll be a little bit of back and forth, cause their first answer is gonna be, their, the first thing is gonna say no. We'll respond with, the plant is barely hanging on now, there's no way we're taking that there. So, what's the important stuff? I think they'll allow us to do that, um, but it's IDIM. And they can, they can change their decision, but we've got good justification with Bloomingdale right up the road. Discharges to, uh, not even a ditch, it's trees along the road.
Little dry branch.
Yep. It's not even named, it's unnamed tributary to an unnamed tributary, so it's, it's like, so it'll be something you have in your yard, so.
So, will we have an answer, a solid plan before the applications due on December twenty second?
I'm afraid we won't. So, should we just go ahead and schedule the archaeological for, we need...
I, I brought that letter, a copy for this.
So, they require an archaeological dig because if we go to the route that's along the river to, I can't, is it Gil? That is, they think Gil. Uh, if we go that route, they would require an archaeological dig because it's never been majorly disturbed. And it's, that's the air wall, bacteria canal area, they have their concerns. Uh, so, it sounds like we probably need to get just permission from him to do an archaeological dig on that site, if one of you guys can coordinate that. It's not, when I say dig, it's not excavators and Ethan's like a shovel out and he is looking for Indian beads or whatever they do. And I, what we can...
And then where the building is too.
Did we have, did it say the building also? Okay, and then I guess where the building is at, we'll also need archaeological digging. Which is insane.
The RO facility.
The tree RO facility?
I, we might, I guess, have to do, have to do it, but I disagree with that one. Cause there's a basketball court on one side and there's electric lines and sewer lines and everything lines on the other side and it's next to a water pump. I will work on getting, contacting a archaeol- archaeologist. Sorry, I can't say that word. And it's not that type of money, usually, I don't know a lot of someone will pay for it. But we're, we're working getting a contact, that's it.
Well, I...
And I think you can challenge the building one based on how this is worded, but they initially said.
Well, since Cindy was here, maybe thinking of this, um, and other projects. We need to probably get something in writing from Mr. Gil before you submit. And are we gonna have to do all the uniform relocation act stuff even, I, I, yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I...
Even, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I have it to show.
So, do you wanna go ahead and, this, December is coming up faster than, than we want to accept, I think. Do, you want us to go and draft an easement for, for his location?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we need something and I, I guess I could, or I could do an agreement with him that says he will give us the easement maybe. Um, and that might surprise us.
There's some other property addresses listed here too, so I'll just...
Other property? Dustin, why not move north from that spot to go to... I said, why not move north from Dustin's property to where the Boy Scout property used to be? The town owns that, we got a sewer line going right out there.
How, is that, I can't remember which street that is, is that?
It's on Water.
Water and then...
But I don't need to worry about site acquisition of these properties.
No.
Just the easement would be the only...
But as far as the archaeological...
If we got though, something from Mr. Gil, that, like an agreement that says, I agree that if you do need to put an easement in, I will grant to you no cost.
Yeah.
That would suffice for site control, I think. Cause I hate to have him give us an easement and then end up, it sounds like that's probably what will happen, but I guess we could always revoke the easement or rescind the easement if he grants it to us.
Yeah, and Dustin provided the, the two options of, of that waste coming out so that shipos responded to both of those scenarios.
Sorry, we're waiting to, I just wanna make sure I'm talking about, I've got the right.
Do you want...
It's about two pieces of property, no...
I'll just go carry on. I have, it doesn't work. It's coming.
What kind of issues are we anticipating that the flow of the river is up above the output of the RL? And the RL is not continuously outputting, the pressure of the RO system?
Yes, exactly.
The river water out of the si- out of the, out of the...
Yeah, it'll be, it's all pumped.
Or they're gonna fight each other.
It'll fight each other a little bit, but the pump was high enough pressure that it'll pump it out into the river without, unless the river gets up ten feet above Water Street, which means we got bigger fish to fry than, than the Water Street plant at that point.
I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm surprised.
We were looking kinda right in here. Is this the Boy Scout? So, there's a, is this a house, water's here, then the Gil, new shop looking building right along the street.
They're having some issues with it.
There, where's the alley?
Right there, right next to them, wait.
Okay, so it's this property right here.
Okay.
I will...
It's pretty dark, I don't know if we'll be able to see much tonight, but I'll come up here and take some pictures to see. Really just need to be able to get over a little bit and grab that archaeological...
I think the town, Kathy, have, they already marked the sewer line there for those people that wanted to build on the property. Bill Scout property on Water Street.
Yeah, but we've not heard back from them, once we told them they were gonna have to revise their building permit and...
Yeah, but I...
But it was marked from...
It was marked months ago, but I don't know.
Might not be marked now.
Well, I'll take a look at it, I mean, if...
There's flags there.
Means we're gonna get an easement, that would be...
Perfect, it's town property.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be heal. Yeah, that would help and then, just as long as there's not a big tree, I mean, we tore that house down, so there shouldn't be much back, it should be, should all be small growth, I would imagine.
So, we were gonna go by Gil's new property.
Yeah, I know that was gonna be farther south than... That'd be ideal if they could do it right there. Farther, farther north, farther north.
So, whatever you tell me, think closest to the final, it'd be that's what we used to do.
I'll double check.
I don't know.
I'll back to historical stuff.
But I, I didn't, I didn't tell you that.
The Janus family itself and they've...
Water and Crawford.
Yeah. For the disposable, would you still have to do the archaeological dig there? They put a bridge in there. So, that was all dug up already once, already, whatever year the bridge was built.
So, that's what I would argue with the, the Boy Scout. If we, if we get close to where the old house building structure, whatever you wanna call it, was at, would argue that with that new location, that it was, the house was dug and built there and then we tore the building down, where you guys tore the building down, it's been more than disturbed. I would argue that with Shipgo, I don't know if we're getting...
And then if you get too close to bridge and then you got M.DOT and DNR and Corps of Engineers.
The bridge is really wide open right as, I mean, there's a rip rap down there, but um, you know, there's GIS.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
This, that's the first place I would, cause it's wide open and we could claim right away.
Can you not do it there?
You know, well, cause we just vacated that, but there were a couple other alleys up there.
That's what they were talking about using that, where um, those people applied to that building permit, that had that storm drain there. That would be ideal.
There are little...
Town owns the property south of that.
We can pull up the, the GIS and make sure we're on your guys' property and we'll take a look and...
There's an alley in Shipgo right there. Or street, I want to, I don't know.
It's, I mean, we can, if, if, I'm, I'm sorry to step out there for a second, but if, I mean, if property owners willing to do it, that's fine. Um, but I just think if there was another way, the, the river gets farther away though, when you get up farther north, you go there.
It doesn't have to, we don't have to get it into the water. I mean, you go down to the wastewater treatment plant, that...
Yeah, but we'd be discharging on, you know...
Way up high. We just have to get over kind of the hump, I guess you'd call it. I'll take a look at the topography there.
Yeah.
We'll do that, so I'll, I'll look at that and then if we need to do an archaeological, I'll come back in the next meeting to discuss. But that may alleviate it being as the house is there. And then the treatment plant, when I, I strongly disagree with that determination with, there's a big electric line, it goes right through there, so. Had a basketball court.
Okay.
I assume pumping to Illinois has been considered, right?
That's good. Send it to Boone County, they don't wanna drain the river, change the wall back.
It's all I got, hopefully, for you guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
At Thanksgiving.
Do you wanna, wanna call me or you wanna meet in person?
I can just call you.
You sure?
Yeah.
I mean, I can meet you personally if you want.
He's gonna come look at that one anyways.
Let's get through Thanksgiving.
Okay.
I just wanna ask you some questions. Thanks.
Wow, seven runs for the month.
Thank you, Dustin.
Everything going good so far? Uh, kids' Christmas parties come up December second, it's a Saturday, three o'clock. Y'all more welcome to come by and see Santa Claus, maybe get a candy cane or a bag of candy.
Coloring books and grants.
And coloring books.
And coloring books, candy cane in, so we're plugging right along. Couple fires, so it's a little interesting on the list here the last few weeks, so. Plug, appreciate everything, we're still doing research and seeing what we need, what we gotta... everything, we're still doing research and seeing what we need, what we gotta go.
And we're officially under a burn ban.
Yep, we're under a burn ban, but then it first didn't affect some people, they thought they were above and beyond it, so.
Yeah.
If you, uh, see them up burning, call dispatch, they'll send an officer over, then they'll call us, and we'll just turn it into my pit.
Is that church scans too?
We're all good, so, we'll get through this debacle, the water, and the wastewater, and all that, and then it'll be a new fire alarm, and so we've got some stuff that's coming up, it's gonna be an issue for us later on down the road, but we're doing some research and all that, so.
Thanks for all your efforts, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Banner.
Um, minor stuff, Franks in the Park was a success, we had people standing in line in the rain to get on a wagon that they knew they were gonna ride off on the rain on, but it was fun, there was a little bit of, we could've just canceled it, but we didn't, and we just, we had a good time in spite of everything, and we'll be bigger, better again next year. And thank you for your support, everyone. Let's see, we have the cook-off coming up February 17th, and 2024, and then the eclipse viewing will be April the 8th, and then after that, we have the five day in May, and so we've got some, it's gonna be boom, 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 as soon as the calendar turns. Kathy emailed me about the camping, concrete pads in Rita Park, and I think we decided we're gonna wait until spring, and we'd like to get someone with a camper down there to kinda see how people really do expect to park there, because during festival, people just park any old way, and we need to decide how we want them to park there, and how we need to pour the pads to facilitate better camping for people, and we don't wanna make it awkward, so, we're just gonna kinda hang on, and we still need the help of the young men that said that they would take care of the concrete for us, and we'll hopefully get that done in the spring. And we've made a lot of progress in the restrooms down there, and the bathroom floors there are painted now, and it is just so nice, and so much nicer to keep clean, and then we've got the shower curtain, yeah, and more privacy with the shower curtains and everything, so it, it looks a lot better there, we're still gonna paint the ceiling, but other than that, we're doing okay.
Pertitions.
Yes, and we got the new concrete block partition, so, we made a vast improvement there, and, um-
Nice.
I don't remember, but am I forgetting something? I don't remember anything, we've been busy, it's been real busy, but anyway, I don't wanna take any more time, I appreciate your support always, thank you.
Here's a, thank you, George, for the part of work.
We think we had around 300 people there, we had 275 paying customers, but we think that we're around 300 people there for the party, so, it was a good evening, it's always a good community event, and just a fun evening. Thank you to everyone who-
Our cook.
Our cook, yeah.
A little nope, probably burn hot dogs.
That's all right, we, we don't, some people like them first.
Right.
That's all I have, Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Yeah, I just have, hopefully, a quick thing, so you've, you've seen the letter that we received back from Shipbo, that was just one of the things I wanted, to create some awareness, so I would appreciate that, that Dustin was here to talk about it, but we also did our site visit with the Okra Community Liaison on November 6th, and Paul and Rex and John were able to attend that meeting, so I'm just sharing some comments that impacts the board relative to that visit, to go over with you, and one of the first things that they pointed out, because when we did the budget for the project, we only, we were only showing the S R F funding from the forgivable and non-forgivable loan is, is basically where the payments are coming from, their statement is, the grant adminis, grant administration fees, the fees you pay for the environmental review and the labor standards cannot come from S R F, so those would need to come from local funds, the total for that-
They can come from the S R F loan, could they not?
The comment they gave us that day is it cannot come from S R F, cause I put it under the non-forgivable loan portion, and that was their response back.
Okay.
I can, I can double check that, cause I was surprised too.
Yeah, that, that-
I mean, if you're borrowing-
Yes, our money, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, we're borrowing, it's not, yeah, and I feel like, I feel like, I mean, I'm doing some S R F Okra stuff now, and I feel like that's how that's set up.
And I'm pretty sure that's how I-
Maybe, 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 maybe a little bit of it, maybe like 5,000 of that came in from, from local, but, but, I mean, we can do it, it's just-
I'll just direct the question back and ask, you know, the intent is for it to come in the non-forgivable loan portion, and see what, what response I get back on that.
Otherwise, we'll just add it to the loan, it's all a wash.
Yeah, but that total, for all three of those pieces, is 66,000, so, it's smaller than the numbers you've been talking about, for sure.
So, that, if the, if we're not approved for Okra funding, then we'll be out the environmental review for sure, or the archaeology?
Yes.
And the labor standards?
No.
No, just that, just the archaeology?
Yeah. Cause you're not gonna get anything from me unless you're approved.
We, Cindy and I can talk, I mean, I, I think, if that's the case, I mean, I, I, you're talking, I don't know how much the archaeological, the environmental's about 5,000.
Yeah.
I don't know how much the archaeological, as long as they don't find bones, you're probably, if they find bones, it's a problem, but really, I've seen it, it's not very-
Yeah, I don't know, I have a lot of things.
I don't understand what they're saying, cause then, just, okay.
But I will shoot them that question again and, and get another response, but that's, that was one of the first comments we received, the other thing, Scott, is they said the fair housing policy was missing some appropriate head required language.
I don't even know if I did it.
It's in the policy, it's in like a policy format, like, like-
I'm sure somebody gave it to us, and we just-
Okay, it probably has to be updated, um, so I, do you need me to figure, find out exactly what's missing?
If each one gave me the new one, we could just adopt a new one, and we'll heal the old one and adopt a new one.
Okay, at your next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, we knew this was going to be a request, but they're looking for a commitment letter from S R F, all we had to submit at that time was the email exchange with Dustin, so.
I'll talk to him.
Okay, I know that's kinda hard to press now, cause you've not closed on anything.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I wanted to talk to them anyway, I know that, you know, H W C's reached out to them about, we're still optimistic that, once they see some of the rate analysis, that the, the numbers are gonna change more favorably, but if we get something from them now, I, I don't, I want it to be in writing, but I want them to be willing to change it as part of what I, I don't want them to, I wanna do it in a way that they say, this is what our preliminary commitment is, subject, but if we change it, it'd only be better for you, or something. I'll talk to S R F, see if we can get Mr. Herkins or Haskin, wait, Bell Herkins?
Haskins.
Haskins.
It is, no, it's Herkins.
Herkins, yeah, and, and, get on, get on a call with him, or an email with him, so.
And the conversation we had was, our liaison is trying to help us receive the maximum number of points possible on a grant, so, we have the question again, are there other things that have, that provide community input, so, we were just, I mean, I think we've done the survey, we've done the public meeting, you guys have been talking about this for a long time, do you, and I'm kind of looking at Kathy, do you think there's anything in any past minutes that would-
Not where the public's been here and commented, been discussion between H W C and these guys, and Novak, that gave you those.
Yeah, yeah, but if it was resident A come in and said, I'm tired of buying bottled water, you know, those kinds of things, but we do have a Facebook post that we can use and, and those things, so, I think we're kinda maxed out on anything that's documented, but they wanted to just state that, as Paul-
I'll get that real-
Yeah, to just, you know, come up with at least a scenario of having the conversation with the farmer, and they would also like to see a letter come from the council, naming this project as a priority for you. So, if, I don't know if one of you wanna write that, or if you want, Kathy, I don't know how you want to approach that one.
It needs to come from the council, Craig.
Yes, it needs to be signed by the council. And I don't know, maybe Paul contributed in the letter, the, the, with the other conversation, and then just say, also, as, as council, we've got, this is a priority for us, if you wanna just come by.
Hey.
Okay.
We got backup.
All right.
Chickens kinda ran for a lot of weeks, we're all, all alternatives, and-
Yeah.
Safety's a priority.
I mean, I know I don't know our case.
It's our practice.
Yeah, yeah, all of that good stuff, and the, the last thing they asked for, which I, I found this just a little odd, so the A and P is Asset Management Plan that you had to do, they, they were asking, what are you going to do from that? Well, everything, and if there's things that have to happen, how would you, what fund would you use to pay for them?
There's been some weird questions.
Yeah, they are.
Well, we have an improvement fund in our water, or we will, once this is over. No, we will, I mean, I, I don't know, do you have a water improvement fund there?
We have depreciation.
Appreciation, we will use our depreciation fund.
Okay. And I have not seen the, the A and P, so I, I mean, I'm familiar with what are normally in them, but-
I mean, it's, it's a weird question, because the, the, the rate will have a built-in-
Yes.
For that, that will go into, in theory, the depreciation fund, and that's what the depreciation fund is used for, is to fund those-
Active, with whatever those, yeah.
Asset management, the replacement of the capital assets, pumps and things, as they need to be replaced.
Maybe they just wanted to say something.
Make sure we know what we're doing, I guess, maybe.
Yeah.
Make sure we have a plan.
And that was it, I mean, as far as things I need from you, the other comments, or things I can tweak in the application itself?
We're gonna need a sewer Okra grant.
Sure sounds like it.
Duly noted, right?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, we got really good feedback, I think, from her, and she felt we had a very strong competitive application, and, or she's not the one that gets to, to vote for us, but-
It's good to meet you. Do you have a copy of the agreed order, and all that?
Yes. I don't know if you guys have some other thoughts you wanna share from that meeting,
No, I'm good.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to the, again, the donation request from the fire department to the Hannah Children's Christmas Party, last year we did $500 split between electric and gas. I'll make a motion to do that again. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a stain?
Do we? Do we abstain?
To, yep, abstain.
Yes.
Yeah. Good job, okay.
Okay, now we got a notice, tech payers, for the additional appropriation for the extended fund, to clarify the expenditure demolition of the house in the north end.
That's just to cover our bets before the end of the year, because it actually should've been done at the time, but it's an, just a reportable fund, it's not, but we have to get permission, so.
Your book's all.
Yeah.
So we need to have a motion to approve that?
No, I'm just letting you know, and then at the December 7th meeting, that'll be the public hearing.
Okay, copy letter sent, item enclosed in the package, in regards to wastewater inspection violation of letter. Everybody know what we, what they were told. We got a copy of an email from Ron Reagan of U T M requesting that we go to the A C H for future invoice payments. That's it.
Do we need an ordinance for that? We don't need one.
Not the, I, I-
They say it's more secure form of payment.
I've never had anybody have to do one to, to do it, credit cards they want, also, but-
The only ones we do right now are the state mandated ones, we don't do anything that type, but. So you get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go through the A C H for invoice payments.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And everybody's got their direct deposit paperwork to get back by the end of the month.
Okay.
And that's for us.
That's all.
This is for us.
Okay.
If you went to a big trick. Make up for all them misses.
I don't know, December usually.
Usually it's the second you get to see it.
So it's fair, let's spend it shopping.
It's supposed to be the end of the month, because that-
It'll be after that.
So it's go midnight on Wednesday, it's gonna be doing a bank-
Yeah.
Really?
Oh no, I'm looking at November, hang on.
When in New Jersey go Wednesday?
Fourteenth. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, fourteenth.
So, okay, everybody will have that back up to Kathy, or her, that'll be upon you.
Can we jump back up to that H W C pay out?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
I don't remember dropping that up though.
Oh, that's the water, that's, okay, yeah, that's a difference.
If you want-
The paving, the water.
Portion split in the back.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
So you don't have to, it's a choice.
Motion to approve that. Correct. You will be- I'll make a motion to approve that, that amount for the H W C pay, $52,525.
You will be able to reimburse yourselves for all of those payments, once your loan closes.
What's that for us?
Second.
Comes in?
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, drinking alcohol reveals several violations in regards to our policy, and our current policy does not let out in the last few years. Contact the U S D I for assistance, and would like to switch their program, switch to their program in order to keep us in compliance with the program. And the property of the email in regards to that, and a violation-
Had all this audit stuff going on.
Yeah, wanted by September.
Put it on the corner, I'd ask them to, so we grabbing up that audit, go through my paperwork, maybe morning, and I was like, oh my god, so I just think I could send it to mine, just getting this message.
U S D I testing program. USBI testing program.
Is the payment for the screening and all that higher than what we've been doing? Or is it equal roughly? I mean...
Kathy said it's in water.
Once, the thing is, by switching to that new program, every employee will have to go be tested as new employee, so to speak.
Because you're starting anew.
But once we get through that, it'll be a lot cheaper.
Okay.
Plus, we'll have the support that we don't have from this DSA, drug and alcohol company.
And where do they, do they...
Now, this...
Local, where do they go?
They used to come to us when we had to send, if the mobile unit wasn't available, we had to send to Rockville Family Health and Help Center. There's a certain laboratory that we'll have to go through. He wasn't sure, but he'll check in this area and see which one it would be. Probably Terre Haute, I would assume, or...
A lot of music down there.
Right there by that, behind the...
Fruit Ridge and, uh, Fruit Ridge and...
I was thinking right behind the mall.
So, that, do you have a site behind the mall too? For that toy slayer.
There's no charge for the plan, it would just be the fee per...
Just the fee, and then the charge. Well, if it's gonna be better than what we have and get the help that you need, I say we make a motion to...
Have the paperwork to back this up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I say we make a motion to switch over to, what is this, the USBI?
I'll second.
What's the initial outlay gonna be for, is everybody gonna be retested again?
Yes.
Yeah. 175 per test.
Yeah, but once that's done, we'll be in a pool, you said 3,500 people, so we might not even have one or two tested per year.
Just be random that they pull, that they...
Yeah. Compared to what we're paying DSA right now, it, in the long run, it'll be cheaper.
You made a motion.
I did.
I second it.
Can you second? On favor?
Aye.
You're gonna have to send somebody this thing on November 30th?
Oh, the...
About to discap over there.
Oh, it's...
I guess I'm...
Oh, that's from the last meeting? It's gonna be a Zoom meeting?
Okay.
And he's not got it set up yet. The meeting's the 30th, but after that, he'll set up a Zoom meeting, and anybody who wants to join can join it.
Sounds good.
And I think, didn't you and John say you could just do it at his office?
Yeah.
That way everybody could just be in one spot and...
Smell something else.
Guess I was sleeping during that period.
Yeah, he must have been, these are yours. You lucky person, yeah.
Yes. See, we're not having all the pictures here, there's a lot of things. He has to give. Oh, what do you got?
I just wondered where we stand on all you've seen for next year, if you know anything, are you gonna help us, or are we gonna go elsewhere?
Do we still have two years on our contract?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Thanks for John's second answer.
We just signed it in the last year, I think.
Presentation at home somewhere.
That's all we've got.
I brought this up before, but it's something we're gonna have to do, that salary, and that's gotta be done by the end of the year.
Yes, it is.
So, do we wanna tell me need a special meeting, is that executive?
Yeah, you probably need to look your numbers over and somebody run some numbers before you make any kind of decision, just because of...
Everything else going on.
Just saying it.
So, what...
So, have to be either at your next special session or one after that, one prior, that'd be the weekend that's in studio.
Two years now. I've been on two years.
People's availability. Okay, thank you.
12th was completed, and you did a 2020 budget.
I'm good on...
I don't remember how many you did it.
I can't believe they...
Rex?
Talk to you at the end of the month, I'm good on the 30th and the 1st, I know it's here.
So, the 30th?
I'll be out of town the 30th, and the 1st is the first night of the candy cane thing down there.
Yes, isn't it?
Those nights are out for me, but... The 29th, is anybody available? 29th.
Oh, yeah.
I'm good. I'm working the whole night, Rex. Yes. 22.
22?
22.
Oh, 22.
We're trying to make for the, look over the salary thing.
Yeah. What's your schedule, Rex? When do you, when are you off?
Let's see, I'm off the 22nd.
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. Off the 25th, which is November 7th. Yeah, 30th and the 1st, I'm off.
I could do the 22nd.
Hey, what does this sound like to you? Because I can get you paperwork that you need to look at and some figures, salary ordinances on the 7th. Do you want to set a meeting after that? Because somebody should really run some numbers and what you're thinking in your head.
Okay.
It'd save you another, another meeting.
We're here already, anyway.
I'd do it to 7th.
I can give you all that paperwork, and then one of you can run some figures, and would that work?
It'll work for me.
Works for me.
How about you on the 7th? Yeah, we can do the 7th.
That's our regular projects.
And then be afterwards, after the special?
No, it has to be during the special, and you can't talk about the salaries.
No, I mean, but we'll talk about it after the regular meeting.
Yeah, because I can give you all the paperwork and stuff on the 7th and information, and then you could meet after that, if that works out better, unless you wanted to do it before.
That's, that'll work for me.
How about you on the 7th? Yeah, we can do the 7th.
That's our regular projects.
And then be afterwards, after the special?
No, it has to be during the special, and you can't talk about the salaries.
No, I mean, but we'll talk about it after the regular meeting.
Yeah, because I can give you all the paperwork and stuff on the 7th and information, and then you could meet after that, if that works out better, unless you wanted to do it before.
That's, that'll work for me.
The day which will live in infamy. The day which will live in infamy.
Guess we'll go to the corner after fire sale.
Tom?
No, they discussed about the Christmas party, everybody's welcome to come down, if anybody wants to come down, it's a great time, it's very fast. It's quick, but, yeah, and thank you for the donation for it.
Downtown around the post office looks really nice, I know that there's one sign that they're waiting on, but it's on its way, but I don't know if you guys have noticed all the signs and there are the one sign and the curves are printed and it looks nice. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Kathy?
No, I don't have anything else.
Oh.
We go to court on the damage hearing for 1263 North Jefferson on the 28th, so I'm trying to decide whether to have Kathy come and testify live or just get an affidavit from, I'm still...
Get some knockout sales.
November 28th?
I don't, you probably don't have to come, I can probably just get an affidavit from you, but I was gonna torture you by telling you.
Say you make her go.
Well, if you got some other reason...
Say you make her go, come on.
It shouldn't be a big deal, we'll get the judgment, and then I will foreclose upon that judgment against the property, which will ultimately lead to a sheriff's sale. If somebody wants to come in and buy it at the sheriff's sale and pay more than what your judgment is going to be, which is gonna be about 15,000, they're welcome to have it. Frankly, if somebody comes in and offers five for it, I'd let them have it probably, but you can bid your judgment essentially, and then you would own it, and then we could sell it. Or if somebody wants to buy it at the sheriff's sale, they're, they'll have to outbid you.
So, but when they do that, the other lot next to it's already purchased, so it's not available, it's just that lot, and then that corner lot has a for sale sign on it now.
It's sold.
It did, well, okay.
That process will take a few months, so it will be...
So, it's just that lot, okay.
But, so...
I have that going.
It looks better, anyway.
Yes, that's right.
Buy that lot, put me a new house on it.
Jay, can I share one?
And then we'll rent out first.
There, I'm now also working in grants from the Office of Energy Development that's coming from the state. They just announced yesterday that there is a grant available to local governments only. There is no match to this, but they're looking for projects between 100 and 200,000, and it's specific for targeting energy planning, energy audits, building upgrades, and electric transportation for communities. So, I don't know if that is on anyone's radar, to audit all of your facilities, lighting, energy, all of that stuff to get done and see what types of improvements you may or may not need, or if you've already done that and you have plans for some upgrades on your buildings related to that. Again, this is a NOBACH opportunity, and applications are due February the 2nd.
That's through the state?
Mm-hmm.
Because Empa has been emailing a lot of information, I don't know if it's on the same thing through the state or through them, it's through the state, yeah.
Yeah. I probably sent you that one, didn't I, or I got it today?
So, is this something that, like, Skip had asked about, like, new lighting in the firehouse? Is that something we could use for something like that?
Yeah, I mean, they're probably looking for, I mean, up to 100, 200, so if it's...
New firehouse.
Multiple.
New fire.
No, it's energy upgrade.
We could make it in...
But I mean, you guys have talked before about some HVAC things and, you know...
Just look at all the forest lights we got.
So, if somebody could put together a plan...
Firehouse, this one?
This one?
All the offices.
Yeah, this one, not bad, but I mean, those forest, they would do LEDs now.
So, does Empa have someone that would do an energy audit that then could put together a project? Just asking.
Yeah. I mean, do you fill out the application, or you have to have an audit done and then fill out the application?
Well, with the audit, they could itemize all of the things that you need to upgrade, is all I was thinking, rather than you just saying, oh, let's go get an estimate for lights.
Professionally, there might be somebody. Is that something Jason Ali does, or...
Is that like a Kirby Risk thing? They would do something like that?
Yeah, I guess, they'd take care of the light part, anyway, I would think.
But just, I just wanted to plant that out there, I mean, that's a great opportunity for governments.
Well, yeah, see the applications.
February 2nd.
I had, it was a much bigger project, and it was a few years ago, and there wasn't grant money available, but the airport had, a group came out, and they did something like that and said, "Okay, if you place this and do this and do this, it costs this much, but it'd save you this much." Of course, the, and they did all that for free, because then they want the work. So, I don't know who does this stuff, but if you found somebody, you know, that, you probably get somebody come out and do the audit, and then they would want to get the money to do the project.
Yeah, the county, Park County's using, they call, company's called Core, C-O-R-E, I don't remember the second part of that, but he's done those audits and prepared projects, so I think we may use it for some chillers at the courthouse, or, you know, stuff like that, so...
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were big in, you know, replacing boilers and stuff like that, but...
Could give us her name and...
Does that include natural gas upgrades as well? Because it'd be done with the plant.
It says, I mean, it says energy efficiency.
Something more efficient of what we've got up there already, that might be in it.
Yeah, and they give you, like, a contact, so if you have a question, if that would be eligible, you could ask that question.
Do they have a list of what's...
What hits the criteria?
No, yeah, what hits that criteria?
It's those things, I said, if you, if you want to pay somebody to do the audit, if you want to have, you know, X, Y, and Z things done, but it doesn't necessarily expand on each and everything.
Okay, okay.
Like, from these five kind of things.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think that's definitely worth looking into, I mean, it'd be silly to not...
Yeah, I'll send the grant information to John, so he'll have it, but I just wanted to bring it to your tissue, because he wasn't here tonight.
Thank you. Anytime you hear about it.
Electric will be a lot easier done than the gas would be.
Yeah. I mean, I want to, I think what the intent is to reduce the electric, the drain on the grid, basically, is what...
Sure.
Solar panels for the new water grid. Solar, like, solar panels for new water.
Yeah.
Would that be something that the town maybe could install, electric car chargers of the parks?
I think it's intended to serve the government, so if the, if your local government owned electric vehicles...
Then yes, but we don't mind it.
It would be, now, with, with IMBA, they have agreements to put in charging stations.
Yeah. As I said, put, like, a park, go to the East Freeway, you know, church car where they get a cheeseburger.
Get a good charger.
25 minutes, you don't need a cheeseburger.
You'd be able to go another 40 miles.
You'd pay the trickle charge?
But I don't know if that, if that affects the town.
I think the intent is for the town to reduce their usage.
Yeah. No addition is just...
I'm pretty much...
Anything else?
Did you run out of tape?
Guys, I meant the whole battery.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, meeting adjourned.
How are you?
Thank you, everybody.